December first, two thousand twenty-one, the time is five eleven P M and I am calling to order the Bon Park City Council's special meeting. Chief Deputy City Clerk, can I have a roll call? I don't think they can hear you. Would you like me to do the roll call real quick? So, uh, Councilmember Damien?
Here.
Councilmember Garcia?
Sure.
Councilmember Paul C. Hernandez, uh, I believe he won't be able to make it. I will make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hernandez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? Going on, Mayor Protem Alejandro Avila?
Yeah. Sorry.
And then Mayor Iman Jay Estrada, here. At this moment, we will move to open public communications. If there's anybody looking to speak, uh, now is the time. Chief Deputy City Clerk, was there anybody who requested to speak during a special? Special meeting? And that is a no. Uh, looking that nobody else in the public is looking to speak, I will now move to close public communication. And I believe that we have an open study session, and that is part two of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, uh, the Measure H Incentive Presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, good evening. Um, couple, about a month or so ago, we had part one presentation of an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, uh, for the city. Uh, we're happy to, um, introduce Lasar Development again, Craig Edelman and Farzad Mashoud, who are going to be presenting part two, uh, which is the Inclusionary Housing Financial Analysis of what an IHO would mean, uh, for the city, and then, uh, uh, end with, uh, next steps. And I'll now, uh, hand it over to Lasar.
Thanks so much, Ron, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members and others in attendance. Great to be back with you again today. My name is Craig Edelman. I'm a senior principal with Lasar Development Consultants, and I'm joined again by Farzad Mashoud, uh, my colleague, uh, from Lasar, and, uh, our pleasure, uh, to be back with you tonight. Tonight, we're here to talk again about Inclusionary Housing and how adopting such a policy could help meet your affordable housing needs and alleviate homelessness in Baldwin Park. So, next slide, Ron, please. So this overview of, uh, an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance is conducted in the context of implementing Baldwin Park's two thousand eighteen homelessness plan. This is the third segment, uh, in a series of county Measure H implementation-related work, following, uh, our review of accessory dwelling unit incentive programs and, uh, Baldwin Park's potential to address affordable housing and homelessness needs through hotel conversions. So tonight, we'll provide an assessment of the feasibility of an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance in Baldwin Park, and this builds on our prior presentation, uh, about the basics of Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Farzad to, um, take you through a, a portion of the presentation, and then I'll circle back with some of the findings.
Thanks, Craig, and, and thank you all so much for being here. So on, on the next slide, we have, uh, just a few bullets recapping our Inclusionary Housing one oh one presentation. Um, and just the main thing we want to convey here is, uh, the city is considering adopting an Inclusionary Ordinance, and it would be one of a handful of other cities in the San Gabriel Valley to have such a requirement. Um, Inclusionary Housing Ordinances require that certain percentages of the homes in a new development to include units that are affordable to low and moderate income households. Uh, and the Inclusionary Ordinance is one of many tools to increase your affordable housing, and it's the primary tool that leverages land use policy rather than public funds. Uh, state law confirms your ability to adopt an Inclusionary Ordinance, and you can avoid, um, a, a more, uh, time-consuming, uh, state review by staying within certain guide rails of an Inclusionary requirement. The goal of an Inclusionary Ordinance is to en- ensure that, uh, the requirements are not so high that you make development infeasible. And so to get to that, one of the goals, of course, um, and in order to get to that goal, it's important to base your Inclusionary requirement on a financial analysis, and so that, that's what we're here to present tonight. So on the next slide, uh, just another, um, key point we wanted to recap are these considerations when adopting an Inclusionary Ordinance. And those considerations are what kind of development it applies to, whether it's rental or ownership or both, uh, and how many units, uh, how many homes are in those developments, single family, multifamily, is it five, ten units? Uh, what sort of threshold do you want to have? Another key consideration is the percentage of, uh, units that are required to be affordable, five, ten, fifteen, something like that, and to make sure, again, it's not so high that you prevent development. Uh, and then finally, i- another key consideration is to ensure that you're able to monitor, uh, these deed restrictions, so that when you say this unit is affordable, it stays affordable, and you as a city are able to monitor that. Uh, and, and you have your own housing authority, which has a lot of expertise in this area, so that, that's a really big, um, asset. Next slide, um, so like I said, and Craig said, we're here to talk about the results of our financial analysis, so I'm, I'm going to just describe how we did it, um, really briefly at a, at a high level. Um, so we first began by looking at the real estate market in Baldwin Park, um, and, and looking at recent developments and recent sales transactions of newly built and somewhat newly built homes in the last three, four years, um, to see what, what is really the market rate of housing in Baldwin Park, specific to Baldwin Park, um, as well as to understand what is the cost of land that can be developed for housing. Uh, we then created four, uh, different prototype developments. Two of them are homeownership prototypes, and two of them are rental prototypes, and these are meant to reflect the type of development that actually happens in the city, and we'll get into more detail about those prototypes. Um, and then we analyzed those prototypes in, with the real estate market and conducted what's called a residual land value analysis. This just, again, to briefly recap, we talked about last time how an Inclusionary Ordinance pushes the cost of affordable units to the landowner. Um, and so a residual land value analysis asks, is the land, can the land value accommodate this requirement? Um, and can it, can it bear a reduction in land value while still making development feasible? Uh, next slide, a feasibility study, I just want to really note here, is, is different from a Nexus study, so what we did is a feasibility study, which, like you see on the top of the slide, looks at prototypes, uh, ensures that there's an adequate, uh, profit margin and, and, um, viability of the development, and tests different affordability requirements, whether it's five percent low income, ten percent moderate income, different, um, different requirements. A Nexus study, uh, i- is, is a more detailed analysis, and it's meant to provide a legal justification, uh, and it's especially important, and in fact necessary, when you're imposing a fee. Um, so a lot of cities, when they have an Inclusionary Ordinance, i- in addition to, um, a requirement that a certain number of units be built, they offer a developer what's called a fee-in lieu. You can pay this fee instead of building the units. So if you want a fee, you need to do a Nexus study. Um, and a fee is, is very helpful because it creates a fund that the city can then use to, um, create the affordable units it's building. So, again, we are doing a feasibility study, not a Nexus study. Next slide, I, these are the Inclusionary percentages we, we tested. I'll, I'll walk you through these. Um, these are based off of nearby cities, um, as well as other cities in California that are socio-economically and demographically similar. We looked at home price, uh, income and population size, um, and we came up with these percentages in consultation with your city planning staff. Uh, you'll see in the, in the darker blue on top, uh, homeownership tends to be, uh, at a higher income requirement, mostly moderate. Um, we also tested one low-income percentage, so what these mean is we tested if, uh, homeownership developments can, can withstand, uh, a requirement that fifteen percent of their units be affordable to moderate income households. Then we tested twelve percent, if twelve percent of the units can be affordable to moderate income households, and then we tested if ten percent of the units can, can, uh, are affordable to low-income households. So we tested all three of those, if, if those maintain, um, financial feasibility. Then, um, so that's for the two homeownership prototypes that Craig will talk about. Then for one of the rental, uh, prototypes, we tested the percentages in the middle row, twelve percent low income, so again, if twelve percent of the units are restricted to low-income households, is the project feasible? Then we tested the next one, which is a combination of six percent low income and six percent very low, and then we tested the last one, eight percent very low income. Then the final, uh, row here, which is a rental fourplex, um, obviously a fourplex is four units, so you can only have an Inclusionary requirement that's either twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five, or a hundred. You can only have it units of twenty-five percent. Um, and so we decided to test just the twenty-five percent moderate income requirement, um, and because that's what would, uh, uh, avoid a state review. A, a lower income requirement would, would trigger a state review. So we wanted to test if you have Inclusionary and fourplexes, um, does that maintain, uh, feasibility? Next slide, um, then just, la- lastly, before I turn it over to Craig to talk about the results and our prototypes, um, we, we have here, these are the, um, affordable sales prices and affordable rents for a four-person household or a three, three-bedroom home. So the, these are, uh, numbers based off of the most recent data available from the state, and they're specific to Los Angeles County. Um, and, and then for the sales prices, we conducted some analysis to arrive at these prices. Um, these numbers will likely continue to increase year over year as, as prices increase for homes, uh, but we don't expect them to change dramatically. Um, one thing I, I just want to highlight here is that the moderate income and low income, uh, prices, particularly the rent, uh, are very close. This is, uh, we talked about last time how, um, the threshold for low income in Baldwin Park and Los Angeles County more broadly is quite high. It's about ninety-four thousand dollars a year salary for a four-person household. Um, this is as a result of, uh, very, um, specific and quite complicated factors of how those thresholds are calculated, and we don't want to get into those. The, the real point here is that, uh, with a very small decrease in price, uh, about thirty-five dollars a month in rent, you can get a unit to go from being affordable to a moderate income to a low-income household. And so if it's, uh, if it's important for the city to achieve low-income, uh, rena requirement rather than moderate income, uh, it would, it would take just a slight increase in, um, in the requirement of the Inclusionary Ordinance. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Craig to talk more about our four prototypes.
Thanks, Farzad. Uh, okay, next slide, please. So, uh, first, we're going to describe, uh, the two prototypes for ownership housing. We've got small lot, single-family development. So this would be, uh, uh, again, relatively small, single-family homes, generally in a planned unit development, so, uh, you know, approximately, our assumption was a forty-unit, uh, uh, development, uh, of compact, single-family homes. Uh, and then we have a condominium townhome typology as well. So there are several of these projects either coming online, uh, or have come online in recent years, as well as in the pipeline right now, and the market prices are based on data for a two thousand square foot, single-family home and a one thousand square foot condominium on average. Um, these are Baldwin Park's most common new construction housing typologies. Um, so, uh, worth noting that this, these product types are, are already being produced. Uh, next slide. So when it comes to rental multifamily housing, um, we've not seen that, uh, happen, uh, much in Baldwin Park recently, but your housing element anticipates that there could be some S B nine development of fourplexes, uh, or, uh, you know, multiple, uh, units on a formerly single-family lot, uh, with one home possibly turning out, uh, one, one home lot turning in, uh, out four, uh, units. And then also, tr- what we call transit-oriented development apartment, so infill, higher-density, uh, rental around transit corridors. So our research, as I mentioned, found that the city has not had any, uh, substantive new rental apartments built, uh, in over twenty years. So this is, uh, fundamentally, I think, a challenge when it comes to Inclusionary, uh, policy, and I think, uh, is, uh, something worth, uh, further consideration and analysis when it comes to, at, you know, adding an additional Inclusionary requirement to multifamily rental that's already not being developed. Um, so what, what we'd want to look at is to what degree that lack of development is because of land use impediments that are being, uh, addressed by the city, and to what degree those are because of financial, uh, feasibility issues around cost or, uh, rents.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but since we're on the topic, I do want to ask where you received that information from.
Uh, Farzad, maybe you can, uh, help with the, uh, the research?
We, we reviewed, uh, all of the, um, rental, uh, and for-sale multifamily housing in the city through a database that was CoStar, which looks at public records as well as their own private, um, records, and the oldest, um, multifamily rental home we could find in the city was built in, that is not the newest, it was nineteen eighty-nine.
Okay, does, how, what, did you consider the Rome Project, which is a rental project, and it's T O D infill, and it was completed in two thousand eighteen?
That's, that's an affordable project, right?
Right.
So we're, we're looking at market rate projects.
So that, yeah, and I, I apologize for not specifying this, but of course, if for, for Inclusionary purposes, we're looking at market rate development and trying to leverage affordability out of market rate development. So thanks for pointing that out. I apologize for
Thank you.
for not specifying that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, um, your housing element estimates that two hundred and fifty homes could come as a result of the S B nine legislation, and, uh, the Turner Center from U C Berkeley estimates that about a thousand new feasible market units could come in this upcoming, uh, 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 housing element cycle. So we want to see if an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance could be feasible. Um, and as, while I'm talking about S B nine, just noting that planning staff is going to be doing a presentation on S B nine later tonight to give more information on that, so stay tuned for, for more information on that. Um, and, uh, on that note, and we touched on this, uh, in the last presentation, we may, you may want to, to consider setting your, an Inclusionary threshold above four units, uh, as to not, uh, require Inclusionary units on, uh, S B nine-style fourplexes. Um, that would be a, a policy decision by the city, but doing that would effectively help incentivize more S B nine opportunities. So again, stay tuned for more details on S B nine later this evening from Ron. Um, and then also noting, Inclusionary could be more valuable in downtown transit-oriented districts if, uh, density is increased, which could impact, uh, feasibility. So allowing more units, uh, would then come with more affordable units, uh, generated, obviously, as a percentage of the total development. So next slide. So it's critical to note that feasibility and Inclusionary Housing Ordinance effectiveness is dynamic. It changes over time as a result of several important variables. These include development costs, sales and rent prices, uh, and area median incomes. Those are all critical variables that go into, uh, the feasibility and effectiveness of Inclusionary housing. So Baldwin Park is challenged in a lot of ways because it has very similar, a very similar cost profile as the rest of the region, but its market rents and prices are somewhat lower in comparison. Um, so that's a strain on feasibility, and then when we look at Inclusionary and affordable housing levels, those are the same, uh, across the entirety of Los Angeles County. So, um, that's a constant. It's not specific to Baldwin Park, which is also, uh, you know, challenging in relation to some of those other variables. So, uh, to summarize, here are the results of our preliminary analysis of the four prototypes and each of the income levels we tested. These are initial assessments that warrant more detailed analysis, but what they do indicate is that Inclusionary Housing Ordinance could be effective across the range of product types in Baldwin Park. Now, one of the challenges here is to get to whether or not, especially again, when it comes to multifamily rental, whether these are feasible in the first place, regardless of an Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And so I know the city is already looking at that in response to, uh, you know, through the housing element and in response to the rena requirement. Um, but again, that bears a little bit more research, uh, particularly a- around cost data, but, uh, but summarizing, uh, what we found here, um, starting at the top, uh, with the homeownership, uh, uh, typologies, with single-family, we found that the twelve percent moderate income requirement could be feasible. I should note that what we mean by feasible, and this is also pretty arcane, um, is that within the context of Inclusionary housing and the laws, uh, that govern that, uh, um, essentially, what has been established is that a feasibility, um, centers around the impact, as Farzad referenced earlier, on the land value, the impact on land value. And basically, uh, the, the, the guiding principle is that if land value is decreased by less than thirty percent, then that's considered a reasonable impact and a reasonable level for, uh, Inclusionary housing feasibility, and so over thirty percent would be infeasible, and so that's the threshold we use. So, um, I apologize. I know that's, that's complicated, but I thought I should provide the backdrop available to, to answer additional questions uh, on that, but that's the metric. And so what we found is that the twelve percent moderate income level on single-family housing type could be feasible, and the fifteen percent moderate income and the ten percent low income are likely infeasible. Now, this is probably due to the larger home size, uh, and when we compare it to the townhome and condominium, uh, next to it, we, we found that all three of these levels potentially could be feasible. Um, and one of the reasons there to note is that an affordable homeownership level that Farzad touched on early in the presentation is the same for either of these typologies. So again, we've got that affordability component coming in, um, that's, that's not only constant across LA County, but constant across homeownership types. Um, whereas, uh, the for-sale, uh, the, the market, uh, sale price on a single-family home on a per-square-foot basis is generally higher than the townhome or condominium, considering that it's likely a preferable product in comparison. So that's one of the primary reasons we see greater feasibility on the townhome or condominium level, is that the per-square-foot market level is lower than on the single-family, and then we also have smaller units on the townhome or condominium. So our assumption on the single-family was all two thousand square foot, three-bedroom homes. On the condo and tom- townhome, we have a more efficient construction type and a broader range of, of unit sizes as well to achieve affordability. And then moving to the rental types, again, noting, uh, as Farzad did, that this fourplex version, we only looked at one option, which was twenty-five percent moderate income on a rental. And again, noting that the moderate income rents are relatively close to market rents, and so it's not, uh, uh, it's not a huge financial impact, uh, at least currently, to require, uh, uh, one moderate income unit out of four, uh, not enough, you know, enough that it, it, it remains feasible. And then if we looked at the rental housing, uh, the multifamily rental housing option next to that in the bottom right, what we see is potentially, uh, a feasible, uh, uh, scenario at twelve percent low income, infeasible if we have six percent low income and six percent very low income, but again, feasible at eight percent very low income. And so noting, uh, uh, the, the reason for the difference between those bottom two, the six and six versus eight percent, is that you only have two percent more units at very low income, but the remaining amount, four percent, are back to market rather than at very low income above that, and so that, uh, additional market rate, uh, you know, ninety-two percent market rate as opposed to eighty-eight percent market rate in the, uh, since the six plus six scenario above, uh, ends up making up for, for the difference, uh, you know, the additional very low-income units, and so these are all very close, and again, as I started, they can change significantly over time, so I think that the primary takeaway here is that there is potential feasibility in all four typologies, uh, and worth, uh, additional research and, and analysis, uh, in pursuing this. So, uh, let's see, I think that's the presentation on the findings. Next slide, please. So, uh, wrapping up, if the city decides it wants to move forward with further analysis and a Nexus study, just noting that the San Gabriel Valley Council of Government is making available funds for cities to advance this work. Great news. So this, uh, can fund all aspects of a full analysis, including a Nexus study that Farzad mentioned, which, uh, is worthwhile generally in and of itself in terms of having, uh, a dynamic and flexible Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, and in particular, within the context of things like, uh, those fourplexes, again, as Farzad pointed out, because that's such a small number of units, uh, it could be a useful alternative, uh, to consider, uh, an in-lu fee instead of, uh, an onsite requirement. So this funding through the San Gabriel Valley C O G, uh, would be, uh, actually a pass-through of state, uh, REAP funds, Regional Early Action Planning Grant Program funds. Um, and just noting, you're not alone at looking at Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. So most of the other cities in the San Gabriel Valley, uh, with an ordinance, either adopted it recently or are undergoing an update, and others are looking at, uh, creating Inclusionary housing as well. So that concludes our presentation, and, uh, we'd, uh, be more than happy to take your questions.
Great. Thank you for that. So I think we've been kind of working on this for a year, so after the next steps, when can we expect to have something come to the council?
Ron, I think I'm going to need to defer to you to, to, to take the first crack at, at that response.
Good question, Mayor. The, the price question. Um, the next steps is if the council would provide direction. Again, as, um, as Lasar has mentioned, I, I had a conversation with the San Gabriel, San Gabriel Valley C O G Planning Directors, um, representative, and uh, early next year, they're going to be, uh, uh, opening up funds to fund such programs. So we would have to wait for, um, the C O G to open that up, uh, for us to, um, uh, to kickstart that process. Um, so, um, Craig, if you do know, roughly, do you have an idea of how long an IHO, uh, would take to be implemented?
You know, I would imagine that, uh, that, uh, you could get it done in, I, I would estimate two to three months.
Yeah. And the C O G did mention they should have, they're rolling it out, uh, in February, and as soon as, uh, we'll be waiting at the gates to, to submit our proposal, uh, they would fund it, uh, I would say sometime before the summer or at summer, uh, we could have, uh, an IHO in place.
Great, okay. I think it's, it's an important, um, venture to take on, right? We're seeing a lot of development, uh, you know, development that doesn't necessarily fit the needs of the demographic of Baldwin Park, and it's, um, you know, I kind of touched on this in, in the last meeting, right? We're seeing a exodus, not just at Baldwin Park, but the San Gabriel Valley and even California on its own. You know, I've been going to the schools, and every single elementary has less than five hundred students. Um, you know, and, and the medium income here is not sustainable for the new type of housing that's coming in. And so as we develop, one of the most important questions that we have to ask ourselves is, how do we develop for the community and not at the expense of it? Um, so I personally, I think it's great that we're doing this, and I, and I do think that we need to continue moving forward with it, but I will, uh, hold off to hear my colleagues' comments.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I, I have a bit of a different perspective on that. Um, I know that one of the challenges in our community, as probably is is the case for other San Gabriel Valley communities, is we have
We have um, families who have been here in the community for many years, decades. And have raised their children and now their children are looking for more of that moderate income housing. And um, you know, they're, they don't necessarily fall into the very low or low income. Um, but the, there are more of that workforce housing. And priority for me was to create moderate income housing. And um, so I think it's, it's important for us to look at very low, low, but also moderate income. Because you do, you know, I, I've been out there in the community and talked with families. Who are so frustrated because they want to stay close to their kids, who are now raising their own families. Um, they might be nurses or teachers or, you know, um, young professionals. And instead of staying in the community, they're being pushed out, going east. Um, because that's where the, some of the more affordables available to them. So that's a challenge and I definitely wanted to highlight it because I don't think we should um, ignore that need in our community. But I also wanted to ask Ron is if you, as you're working with the consultants. If you can keep at the forefront the RINA obligations that have already been called out. So that we know what is the target for low, very low, moderate income. It's not just kind of like, you know, let's, let's do this and see what happens. But to be a little more strategic, you know, about, okay, well, RINA calls for X number of low-income units. And so how are we gonna achieve that? Or the same with moderate income, um, or very low income. This way where our, our efforts are moving in the direction of achieving our goals as called out by RINA. So I just want to make sure that we keep that at the forefront and uh, don't lose sight of that. Because I think it definitely provides a roadmap for what we need to do here in our community.
Absolutely.
On. Community needs. Go ahead, Ron, I'm done.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I said absolutely, um, I second that. Um, and definitely as we're coming to a close in uh, adopting our housing element in February, uh, February, Mar- March, April. Um, uh, we are, the goals and policies uh, definitely indicate that we uh, make sure that we. Are uh, keeping a close eye on those targets, especially on the moderate uh, and the, and the low income.
Great, thank you, Ron, and thank you to the consultants, Lasar, thank you.
Great, does any other council member have any comments, questions? Uh, so Ron, speaking of RINA, um, and then I, I think the census might be tied to this, right? Cause I, I think last time I heard that, one of the reasons our RINA numbers are so high is because our city doesn't grow. But I'm not entirely sure and I can't specifically quote anybody on that. But, you know, and I kind of mentioned this last time as well, based on the census, our city, you know, in two thousand and ten lost residents. I think they lost point-six percent. And then this year, we lost four-point-six percent. Um, so can we expect that because our city isn't growing the way it should? I, I think that's part of the RINA trend, right? We want the city to grow and we're adapting as, that's why we're building more. But can we expect our RINA numbers to change drastically the next time?
That, that's a good question, um, it could very well be uh, see a decrease or we could see an increase. Um, uh, I, I, I think at this time, it's, we'd have to wait and see what those numbers would um, uh, come out to be. Uh, but again, they, they could, it could really decrease or, or they could be more than what we're um, programmed for the next eight years.
Great, okay, just a, just a question I think I always kind of keep in mind ever since I saw the new census numbers. Um, but I, it seems that, um, there's clear direction for you to keep going and then just take, of course, several factors in place. But I also would like for you to take that into consideration, you know, the, the census numbers and kind of the trend in our city. Um, that we've kind of hasn't been grown in twenty years. So that as well, demographics, uh, the market trend, uh, you know, uh, the concerns Councilmember Garcia shared as well. Just kind of keep them all in concern, uh, keep them all in mind as we navigate this IHO.
Absolutely, we'll keep those in mind as we move forward with the, uh, with next steps.
Great, thank you, Ron, and thank you to the consultants.
And Ron, this is Uriko with um, Parks and Recreation. Just as a side note, we do have additional funding cycles as part of the new um, the new Measure H fiscal year. So if there is any additional opportunities and if we're interested in aligning those efforts with the future funding cycles. Then we would also be looking into alternative uh, funding sources. So um, it could be COG, it could be Measure H, and um, I know that the Blue Ribbon Commission will so, also be looking into. Some of those um, areas highlighted in today, tonight's presentation. So if there are any additional funding sources that could come quicker, um, we can definitely address that with council at a, at an upcoming uh, meeting.
Perfect, thank you, Uriko.
Great, I believe, I believe we've, we're concluding our presentation. Thank you to staff, our consultants, Ron, for that great presentation. So I believe at this point, that is all of our official business in the open session and we will now recess to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I, I, there was a case that I wanted to have on that I mistakenly.